Plaid allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, read the minutes from the last meeting. Those present were Fred Farrelly, Joe Price, John Pfeifer, Pam Van Hook, and Toby Binge. Others present was Andy Immer, Robin Cook, Melissa Cunningham. Andy gave his wastewater and street report. Also, the council approved the purchase of a concrete saw in the amount of seventeen hundred and sixty dollars. Also, a string trimmer at three hundred and twenty dollars and a blower at two hundred and eight dollars to be paid from the utility depreciation funds. Mrs. Price made the motion, Mr. Binge seconded, and the vote was unanimous. Additional tree trimming was approved, attached report. With the clerk to determine which funds to use, Mr. Pfeifer made the motion, Mrs. Van Hook seconded, and the vote was unanimous. Andy also gave a building commission report, and Murray Dixon reported on code enforcement. Under old business, the issues with Endeavor Communications, Ms. Immer will have Tom Schuper with Triad Associates draft an agreement to be signed by Endeavor Communications and the town of Atlanta, which will include all town expectations and requirements regarding their fiber optic installation project within town boundaries. The agreement will be submitted to Mr. Cole for attorney review prior to execution. Other business with the ball bymans, the clerk informed the council that she had been approached by local resident Jim Barber regarding the ball bymans. He would like to see them being used for their intended purposes and is willing to help. The clerk asked the council to consider forming a committee which will concentrate solely on this endeavor, bringing information and options to the council for discussion and approval. The council was in favor of this, and clerk will contact Mr. Barber. Under new business, resolution number R-06-2015-01, the council unanimously approved this attached resolution which authorizes the clerk to transfer funds totaling two thousand six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-seven cents to the Jackson Fire Territory. Mr. Binge made the motion, and Mr. Pfeifer seconded. Other new business, the clerk informed the town council that the town is on the agenda for the commissioners' meeting Monday, June 29th at 9:00 a.m. in order to discuss festival issues on the north side of the county line. Other new business, public hearing for proposed water project. The clerk informed the council that the hearing date is set for June 30th at 7:00 p.m. in order for Triad Associates to go over the preliminary engineering report. She advised that the meeting will be brief, however, a quorum is necessary. With no further business to discuss, the claims were signed and the meeting adjourned. Many additions or corrections of these minutes.
I motion to accept these minutes?
Mayor, second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, I will read the minutes from the public hearing. Stu Safka opened the public hearing at 7:00 p.m. The purpose of the public hearing was to discuss the preliminary engineering report for the proposed water project to be submitted to the state revolving fund for grant funding. If awarded, this grant would fund ninety-five to ninety-eight percent of the project. There was a general discussion, the public hearing was closed. Mr. Pfeifer motioned to designate Mr. Farley as signatory for all documents pertaining to this project. Mr. Binge seconded, and the motion was carried with a unanimous vote. With no further business to discuss, the meeting was adjourned.
I motion to accept these minutes?
Mayor, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll move on to our reports this evening only.
Okay. Underwater, the plant's treated nine hundred and fourteen thousand seven hundred and seventy gallons of water since June 23rd. Our average daily usage is forty-three five sixty, and the water majors, whoops. Should've left that out. Filers were backwashed on the first and the ninth. Our July backtea is complete. June water report is complete. It's been submitted to IDIM. Due to the uncommon weather, we'll be flushing hydrants on August 10th. All rain, I didn't want to hit rain that day, but it was all the water we had, I didn't want to add to it. In the wastewater, been performing daily checks to lift station ponds, assessing odor and rain events. Sewer plant's open, we are discharging. We've had sixteen point six inches of rain in the last six weeks. Weekly sewer sample's complete. MK Betts will begin work with sewer plan on Monday. We had a site meeting this week to review the changes, and Triad is revising the prints. Betts didn't have all of the revisions that we'd made. And then, we have received a sewer ban early warning reminder letter. The town was apparently given this notice in 2013, which we never received. I've since asked IDIM to start including me in those letters, since I'm the operator. We had a site inspection last week on this subject, and basically what it boils down to is we have too much influent flow in our system from groundwater. Some of the work we're doing's going to help. We're going to have to craft the response letter to give you an idea. This early ban notice, we need to be pretty aggressive in getting these guys off our backs. This is what got us where we are right now with sewer project. I would not recommend ignoring this letter in any way, shape, or form, because when you do things like that, you end up doing big projects down the road. They're not just picking on us, they're cracking down on everybody. And we've got a couple options. One of the things that we're going to need to do to replace the influent meter at the lift station, it's recording the flows at a higher rate than they really are at BL Anderson out here again on Monday. And the old meter's just antiquated technology. It's really not the right meter for our system. And it's recording at about two hundred and thirty-four gallons a minute for a single pump and four sixty-eight when both pumps are running, but the reality is we're pumping one seventy-two and one eighty. You know, even though our lift station was made bigger and has bigger pumps in '93, the force main to the sewer plant is not bigger, so the second pump only adds eight gallons a minute. I mean, is there more of a backup in case of a pump failure? I know, you know, the day's going to come, the town's going to have to replace that force main. At that time, it would be probably better to go to an eight or a ten inch line to really move it. But we really need to get, we need a magnetic flow meter out there. It's what we have at the water plant. They're the most accurate. I've done some calculations on our flows based on meter runtime. I tried to get the state to let me do my own influent reads based off of, I developed a chart based off of runtime. But our MPDS per minute says that it has to come from the flow meter, so we have to use the flow meter, even though the flow meter's wrong. It's recording at a higher rate. And the drop, just based on pump runtimes, the drop is pretty significant in what our flows really are versus what the meter's recording. But flow meter, magnetic flow meter, we just end it all. It's really the most accurate. It's got a spool that goes in the pipe. We'd have to put a pit in, we'd have to put a valve over there. The spool will go in there. We've got one outside of the water plant, and they're just highly accurate. I mean, they're, they're very accurate. I don't know if you remember, this was about a thirty thousand dollar option on our current project that we couldn't afford. And we've got some prices together. I've got Steve Hart, who's attached, and BL Anderson for Siemens type meter. And the nice thing about the new Siemens meters, a lot of the other mag meters have to have so many lengths of pipe before any turns or anything. That's what, we just don't have enough room in our current valve vault. We got, we got two backflow valves and three valves and a bolt over there next to the lift station now. We just don't have enough room for this meter. But this Siemens new meter will actually allow us to put it closer. Not, we've got just enough space to squeeze in between all this fiber optic stuff that's over there. There's a, there's a fiber optic bolt over there that I never knew was there until it got exposed on this project when they originally brought fiber into town. So we're kind of working on limited space, but with this new style meter, we're going to be able to move that a lot closer to the lift station than we had anticipated before. And really, we're, if we were doing some of this ourselves and hire a local contractor, maybe we're looking at about a twenty thousand dollar savings. I don't necessarily need a decision right here tonight, but I'm going to be putting this letter together. This is, I mean, this is one of the things that we're, we're going to have to do this, and we're going to have to do it soon. You guys can, you know, read over this letter, digest it, and we can talk about it at the next board meeting. I've included the ban notice in there with the different specifics of it. I've also since found another cross connection to our sanitary sewer that we're going to do some dye testing on. I looked at it in Irania, and I tried to go over there a couple of times, and it was starting to flow some, and then we filled up above one of them quite quickly, you know, like the twenty minutes between me being over in the back. But I'm hoping to get in those plug, doing our repairs to the system, and getting a more accurate meter we can get off this. And the other thing, and I've talked with Tom about this, I don't think we need to do this until after this project's complete. But I really don't agree with our eighty thousand gallon a day capacity that's been given to our wastewater treatment plant. You know, we are, we're a controlled discharge, so, you know, if that was a continuous flow designed plant, that may be the case, but we can hold this water. You know, to give you an idea, last month, we discharged almost nine million gallons, but we sent almost seven million out there. You know, I mean, take our fifty thousand gallons a day and do the math on that, but we're still sending a lot of rainwater. Not like, not as bad as we used to by any means, but we still have a lot of rainwater going out there. And she did say that we can have our engineers look at the organic loading of our ponds, the capacity, our detention times, which is good for us when we control discharge, and in all likelihood, we can get this raised above that eighty thousand. We've proven through our treatment process, the organic loading's not there, it's more of a water issue. I mean, it's better to get it off, but I think we can get some expansion. We'd have to apply for, I'm not sure yet, they didn't give me an answer. We'd have to apply for a new MPDS permit or we'll have to apply for a revision to that permit to get this expansion, but it's going to require a little work from our engineers. And they have done some situations for towns where they have a split permit, they have dry weather loading, and they have a wet weather loading, so we're probably going to need to look at that. And what's going to happen if we do nothing? When they put a ban on you, it's no construction. It's nothing, nothing, you know, what's on your system is always on your system. That's their first step, and then, as time goes on, their next step will be to force you into an agreed order, which is what we're under now with the sewer plant. And partially, you know, this I and I issue, we're trying to deal with some of that in this project. So, I guess read over all this stuff, digest it all, and we, you know, we'll, we'll talk about it again. But we're going to need to do, do something. If you have any questions now, but...
Obviously, Andy will want to get this letter put together.
Yeah, thirty days for the date of that letter, which was the ninth.
Ninth of July, so if we could...
Yeah.
Get that back to them.
Well, now, obviously, we're going to have to replace the meter anyway.
Well, I think that the incorrect reading is definitely affecting this.
Yeah, it's against us.
Because they're, obviously, what we hear tonight is...
No, there's, they tried adjusting the meter we have the other day, and there's either, it's either the wrong style meter, he was going to try to get a little teledyne, but it's either the wrong style meter, there's an issue with that meter, because they can't get the flow to below two thirty-four a minute. And the meter has no mechanism for inputting information on your head loss when both pumps are running at the same time. And the other part is, we had, and I put a note in my report last month, and I put a note, I just did my report, wastewater report, and I put a note in there for him on that also about this meter situation that we're working to get it replaced. But the, the meter runs off the pump time, so it's not really using the flow. It's just using information you put into it, so every time the electricity, you know, those pumps kick on, it starts inputting that information into the totalizer. But when you have situations where you have a float go bad or something sticks, it keeps running the pump, we're running the pump, it's designed, it's got, you know, it's got a bypass on it, so you can't run it dry, it'll cavitate, but the totalizer still thinks you're pumping water the whole time this is going on. That was why a while back I replaced, we replaced those floats over there and did some work on the control panel, because we were having an issue with them. You know, and I had some runs through the night where that got stuck, and it thinks it pumped all this water for eight hours when it really pumped almost nothing in that, you know, in that eight hours through the night, so...
When was the last time this meter was replaced?
Well, the funny thing is, the lift station was built originally without a meter, because we weren't required to meter our influent flow in '93, and sometime around '99, that was added. And it's, I mean, it's still the original meter. They've come out and done calibration work on it. We've sent it in, and to give you an idea of the meter that's over there, that's not that great, you can still get it. That meter's about twenty-eight hundred dollars, so it's almost as expensive as a magnetic meter, but we're just going to have more involved in the installation.
More accuracy.
Having to do the pipe work and put in a vault to put that in. So, it's, you know, we've never replaced it before, but there's just better, better technology. At the time, it was easier, and it, the meter's over there, it's funny, I mean, the state has approved what was there, but it's just really not good for our application. In our streets, Ron Hamer's going to be starting tree work this week. The backhoe's had its annual service. The thing we need to do now is change the hydraulic cooler. Rescue's been serviced and the transmission on it, and then we had to replace the radiator in it. It was leaking and had fender rot in several areas. The F-550's been serviced. Then something else we need to think about and look at, I've got a bid here to do the storm drain work at the town garage. It's one of the things we've never done. And we're going to have to get it done before we complete the building over there, because, I mean, we still flood and we get high rain events.
We're going to have to talk about that, because I see down here something about storm drain for the shelter house, too.
That's just another one.
I know, but we're going to have to talk about it, because I'm starting to freak out. Because we've got, we've only got ten thousand in storm water, potentially thirteen one night if we're done with Steve Brock and getting some of the project reimbursed from SRF. So we're going to have to figure out what comes first or how it's going to be. I don't know, I'm just starting to look. Eleven thousand there, eight thousand there, six thousand, I'm looking ahead, so...
Yeah.
And I know, I know, you know, we rely on festival for things, too, but...
If you can possibly, you know, have that on your radar, figure out a solution, and come up with a recommendation for us to, financially, I mean, you're the keeper of the book, so, I mean, you know.
Steve Brock's coming up here Thursday for, I'm hoping him to do something totally unregulated, so... I'm going to talk to him about that storm water fund a little bit.
Okay.
It just doesn't build up very fast, because the majority of the revenue off of the fifteen dollar storm water fee goes to pay off the bond for the project, and just a small amount of that goes for maintenance right now.
If we can get a feel for where we're on now, where we're at with that, so we can make a good decision.
We've received Endeavor's bond and insurance certificate today. Another issue, we've got a problem with our hydra meter. It's been tampered with by the company using it. And it reads twenty-six thousand two hundred gallons less than when I read it on April 20th of this year. I photograph the meter, I photograph the meter every time I read it, so I've got time, date stamp, everything. Because I, I, they were, they were using it today, and I just popped it over and I thought, I'll read the meter, because I knew it'd been about three months. Called Robin, gave her the number, and then when I was back here in the town hall, she's like, hey, this meter reads wrong. She pulled out the last bill she got, and so I looked at the photograph, today's read versus the one in April, and it is backwards. I, I've tested the meter myself, and it's reading forward. I did a video of this, it's reading forward, but the read is almost undetectable. And, you know, I, I had it on hydrant at the, over at the street garage and was running it, and two hundred gallons is all I got to register on it. Like I said, I, I made a video of it when I tested it. I'm working with utility supply Neptune to verify the problem, but from my conversations with them today, as it stands now, they're saying it's intentional, and there is no way that that meter ran backwards. Because they've been getting water almost every day, and read to read is twenty-six thousand two hundred backwards, and even the manufacturer's saying that this is impossible for this meter to, to read backwards that far without something being intentionally done to it. And I mean, we're going to need to get it tested. It's in my office right now, but I want to replace this meter.
At their cost.
Right. I'm not saying at their cost. That meter, it actually come down in price, surprised me, is thirteen hundred sixty-nine twenty-three. And there's a calibration screw on this meter that has a little cap over it. It's got a wire through it with a lens seal on it. It's crimped from the factory.
It's broken.
It's gone.
I started saying, most of these meters, when you put them in, they're, there's a seal.
Yeah, there is. It's gone. It's gone. So, and, you know, this meter hooks to the fire hydrant. It's got a fire hose fitting on one end. It's got a fire hose fitting on both ends, female on the hydrant side, male on the hose side. So, they're saying either the meter's been messed with internally, or if they ran it backwards, because you can tell it has not, as far as the fittings on it, you can tell they have not been taken apart and reversed end for end. So somebody would've had to make it. I mean, if you're going to run this backwards intentionally on the hydrant, somebody would've had to made an adapter to spin it around, I guess is what I'm saying. Otherwise...
Will it even run backwards?
Yeah.
It will run backwards?
It'll run backwards.
If you mess with it.
If you change the fittings around on it, you know, because when we get it, it comes with the fittings. It'll have, well, I'll just show you what this looks like so you can... We've had this meter since 2000, and it has had about four hundred and fifty thousand gallons. I did the calculations. I did the calculations for...
The pictures, the exact same spot.
Yeah. I did the, I did the calculations for this meter rolling, and in the last three months, they would've had to use in excess of a hundred million gallons of water, which, to roll this meter completely over. Now, whether this, the head has been taken off, because you take this screw off, and you can take this head off of here that has the register in it, and it was tampered with. But there's just no way on its own, when this meter breaks, water will flow through it, it will not register. It's a turbine meter, it's mechanical. There is no way, there is no way for this meter to run backwards in its proper configuration, which this is how it came. To make this meter run backwards, you'd have to take everything from this end and put it on this end, and if you look, this is what I'm saying, from the factory, this is an inch and a half coming out, and it's a three on this end, so you couldn't even swap these two. You would have to make fittings. They, I mean, it can be done. They have the parts. I was asking utility supply about it today, but, I mean, you can get adapters. You could adapt this thing up to run it backwards if you had the adapters.
What do you think? Do you think they did that, or do you think they messed with the dial and rolled the numbers backwards?
I think, me personally, I think, I think the meter has been messed with either internally or in that register head, and that's why Ben is checking with Neptune. Neptune used to rebuild and recertify these. They don't anymore. You buy a kit if you want to put the new internals in it yourself. The kit's five hundred and eighty-some dollars, I believe, versus the new meter, but he, I was hoping to have an answer back today before this meeting, but couldn't get it, but he has, he's talking to one of the main people at Neptune about the possibility of us sending this meter back to them for their evaluation. But it's something been done to this meter, and who knows how much water we've really...
It's gone through.
We've really lost, or how much has been gone, how many thousands and thousands gallons. I took the meter, and Robin told me what had happened. I went over there and took the meter. And I went and tested it, made this little video, and I got a call from this foreman, and he said something about me if I had that meter. I said, yeah, I got that meter. I said, we got a problem. I said, what's that? And I said, well, I read this meter today, and I said, it's over twenty thousand gallons reverse of the last read. Well, I don't know how that could happen. I said, well, someone's done something with this meter, and he said, well, I don't, I, I haven't been the one using it, I don't know.
But he's the one calling for it.
Yeah, he's the boss, but that was the response I got, and, you know, I mean...
I want to ask you a question. Most of them meters I ever seen, when you take them apart, there's no forward or reverse setting in them meters. You know what I mean?
What's the direction of the turbine and the gear there? Johnny had an idea, and this is something I'm trying to verify from Neptune, is if you took these bolts out and spun the head...
Oh, yeah, they run backwards.
Will it run backwards? And utility supply didn't know, and that's one of the questions that they sent Neptune today to find out if it's been that or it's been, you know, the register. I mean, I'm telling you, we have...
Those screws look pretty new.
We have three, you know, we have three hundred meters that have been underground for fifty years here until we changed them, and never has it run backwards. I mean, the meter, the meter is just not designed without some kind of mistake or tampering to run backwards. I mean, they're, it's just not built that way. It just doesn't happen. And, you know, you can get backflows. I'm not saying that can happen, but even if you have something crazy going on in your system, the backflow through this thing is a hose laying on the ground. It's not going to suck the water out of the truck they're filling, so it would be basically the water in this meter. I mean, if you've got a hose on here that's laying on the ground, it's not going to suck the water up off the ground. It may pull it back out of here, and you'll get a slight backflow. If you had some air hammer, tower was filling up where this is located, shut off, you're going to get an air hammer, and it could have done that, but for twenty-six thousand gallons, it's just impossible. It's impossible. And, you know, I'm waiting, like I said, before I pass judgment, I'm waiting on this information from the manufacturer. But those photographs, where they're floating around there, I wrote the date on those, but I have the date stamp on my phone and the time of day I read them. They show you in that, that second, when that April one, I mean, that's a bill that Robin, I'm not sure if they paid it yet or not, but that's, they've already paid it, so that's the reading on a bill that already went out, which is, I don't know what the reading was, the one before that. Murray, Murray has that, so I asked him to send me the pictures. But, you know, these bills, these bills were going, each reading since the start, going up, 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 and now we have twenty-six thousand gallon reversal, and that doesn't account for the two thousand gallons a week they've probably been using for the last three months. I mean, you know, potentially, not only is this thing twenty-six thousand gallons off, but it could be another twenty to thirty thousand gallons that's been out the tower. I mean, we're potentially talking like fifty, sixty thousand gallon reverse here.
That, that meter, to take that meter off, you just pull this, pull this thing out and the rear lift's off? You don't have to take this off, right?
Oh, yeah, take these, I mean, you can take the register head, which is this, because this will run off a magnet. There's a magnet under here. You take this screw out, and you can twist this and take this head off of here. You take this screw out and you can twist this and take this head off of here. The head is very similar to our regular small meters.
You can demagnetize the, the magnet.
Yeah, but it still wouldn't run backwards.
See, that's the thing.
That's the, that's the thing, twenty-six thousand gallons reverse. I mean, you could, you could do something to a meter to slow it down or make it not read at all.
Right.
But unless you have mechanically altered something in there, I mean, you're not gonna, you're not gonna make that meter run backwards. And the test, what I got it to read today, the two hundred gallons, because on here now, it's forty-five, three, six. And when I read it today in that one picture, it's four, five, three, four. So when I was testing this, I got it to roll two hundred gallons forward. So it's not, it's not running in reverse. I, I put it on there just to see if, is this thing gonna go backwards and it didn't. It went forward when the water went through it.
So there's a kinda like a check meter or something in there keeping the backflow coming and crank it backwards?
No, it'll backflow. But, what I'm saying is there's no, there's no way for it to backflow for twenty-six thousand gallons.
Yeah, I understand that.
I mean, a back, a minor backflow is, I mean, on a meter this size might be a gallon, which won't even register on here. Because this, this only registers down to the hundreds. The, 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 the tens and the singles are, you know, permanently printed on here. So this is hundreds, thousands, fifty thousand, four hundred. So, you know, this meter's working on having half a million gallons through it. And you can see how far it'll read up, it'd read up to a hundred million.
So then you are, you're gonna have that checked out, is that what you're saying?
That's what I wanna do, that's what I wanna talk to you about, yeah, that's what I wanna do. I mean, I wanna have this, if they'll look at it, have them figure out what's going on. But I told him today when he called me, he wanted to get water anyways, I said, we're done with water. So I can tell, I'm talking to the council tonight at this meeting and till the determination's made of what's going on here, I'm like, water is done.
Can you physically keep them from opening a hydrant though and getting it?
No, we can watch them. I shut the hydrant off at the tower and I told the fire chief, I mean, the hyd- cause they were over there and I don't think they got water, cause that's when he called me about the meter, but I shut the hyd- the hydrant at the tower is off. So, which really isn't doing anything, we gotta, you know, there's a hydrant in front of the, I mean, that, that hydrant's there really for service of the tower, so...
Sure.
But we've got a hydrant in front of the fire station, but I shut it off right now, but...
Well, I personally feel better if we, if we, if we knew exactly, it has a professional check that out and see what is wrong with it, what could've happened, uh, you know, before we start accusing anybody. You know, I think we need to, but if in fact they did tamper with it, then that's another issue, but, uh...
How long did they have that meter in their possession?
For months.
I mean, you have a, a general date?
Well, I'd have to go back and look, I can tell you, but I mean, I can tell you that they've had it for the last eight or nine. I mean, this is January, this is seventh, this is July, but they've had this before Christmas.
Oh my goodness, I didn't realize they had that.
Yeah, because here's what happened. When we first set it up, Murray first took it over there and we set it up, we were gonna take it each day, back and forth, back and forth. And then, we took it too early one day, back and forth, back and forth. I said, alright, I said, here's what I'll do, I said, you guys got the count set up, I said, I loan you this meter. And that's when we got into the problem, the guy's filling without the meter. And I told him, like, man, you have got to fill with the meter. I said, I'll take it back and you'll get water on my time if you're not gonna play by the rules. So, I've been watching them, I've been checking them and since the last big to do with them. Every time I've seen them over there, the meter was there. So, yeah, they, you know, they've had it for the last eight or nine months. Cause they were, even in mild days in the winter out in the country, I mean, they were, you know, they were born outside of town.
And would you read that monthly?
No.
Just periodically?
Two or three months.
Yep.
I mean, cause I don't know, I'd have to go back and look and see how much they were, you know, using. I think...
Forty thousand.
That's what I was gonna say, somewhere in the thirty to forty thousand range between reads.
Have any idea how long it'd take for them to check that thing out? Did they, did they say how long it would take?
Ben was waiting, I was, like I said, I was open to having it before the meeting today, he was waiting on a response from Neptune. The utility supply has the ability to tear it down. Uh, he wanted to talk to them about it and about the possibility of sending it back to them to see what's happened. So, I'm hoping to, you know, either send me an email or give me a call tomorrow.
And this is the only meter we have available, right?
For a hydrant meter, yeah. Yeah, for a hydrant meter. Yeah, we don't... We had that for fifteen years.
If we do get one repaired and give it back to them, can we charge them a deposit? I mean...
I really don't even wanna give them back to them.
The sales department needs to go talk to them, that's that and vandalism.
You know, we pay, like I said, they've come down in prices, if I remember right, you know, we paid around seventeen hundred dollars for that one.
That place has thirteen sixty-nine twenty-five?
Yeah.
Today's cost, like I said, they have...
They have come down. But that's, we, that came from utility supply. That's quota adds from utility supply.
That's still, that's...
It's just impossible.
It is.
I mean, I want the person that makes it to tell me what's going on or what, what the deal is with it, but you just, you never, you know, we have, uh, you know, our new meters, they'll record backflows. You know, and I'll give you an example. They, we had a meter put in backwards when we were changing all these meters. It, it read, you know, it reads just as accurate, it's just in the opposite direction, but it tells you, it told us when we printed the report out, backflows. And it'll tell you minor backflow, I mean, you'll see them sometimes when you audit somebody's bill, but, I mean, when you get a backflow in your meter at your house, I mean, it's less than a gallon. I mean, it's just a shock in the system, especially people that are closer to the water plant probably get a backflow when the high service pumps kick off. Cause I mean, we've got an air hammer valve at the plant that will help alleviate some of that air hammer, but twenty-six thousand gallons in reverse, man, it's just not happening.
Well, let me, let me get a, take it a good picture in my mind. Let's say we send this in and they do say that, for instance, it has been tampered with. And then you would have to say, well, who done it? Then, I mean, you just can't point, you know what I'm saying? Okay, given that, then you have to consider, uh, there's twenty, twenty-six thousand gallons of water that's already unaccounted for, who pays for that? Uh, I'm just trying to, trying to understand the issues that's involved here and how we, what kinda options we have and how we're gonna go about, you know?
Well, totally know what happens.
I don't wanna just take them head on, totally blind and not know what your...
That's why I wanna talk to the manufacturer. I mean, they're gonna know. I, I mean, I had this discussion with Johnny yesterday earlier today too. Yeah, he's like thirty-six years, he's, I'm telling you, this done, this done run backwards. They're just not made that way. I mean, that's the whole thing, that's, that's what Ben was talking about. He's, utility supplies, I mean, he's pretty much their meter expert on the function of these meters of any type and if, the meter is, is just not made to do that. I mean, it don't just happen, it's just not made that way.
My point is, who, who is gonna hold accountable?
No, I don't know.
It's only been them and us that have had it, we have no reason to...
Yeah, I know, but I mean, we save them.
So we should have to file a police report and let them figure it out?
Yeah, at that point, I mean, once we determine that indeed it's been tampered with, if it has been, then...
Let the police handle it.
Yeah. From that point, yeah.
And from now on, you keep it.
I don't even wanna sell them water, I'm burnt out on it, I'm tired of it, man, these guys are, it never ends with them. You know, it's time I've wasted just on this. I got stuff to do instead of babysitting grown men. I mean, I'm like, I'm on overload with this. It just never ends with these guys. It never ends.
Think you'll hear something tomorrow, play for someone?
I, yeah, I mean, I hope so. And it's when he, like you said, he was trying, cause I think, I forget where Neptune's at, Louisiana or somewhere. I mean, they're, we're down south and he was trying to get some sort of, I just checked my email before we started the meeting to see and, you know, was hoping to have some sort of answer before then. But I'm sure I'll hear something tomorrow. They're also saying, in my opinion is the, you know, the bolt, look at the bolts, they look the same. So what I'm saying is, it either been hooked up to run backwards or that register head itself has been messed with.
That's why I asked you, the bolts, the bolts here are all synchronized in both pictures?
Yeah, but they look kinda new.
Well, they're, they're staying with steel, but I'm talking about this one right here.
Yeah, I know, but, uh...
Because you can take this register head off and completely take it apart.
That's why I asked you how that come on, see?
Yeah, take the screw out and when you take that screw, now, this in the screw, on a small meter, it's a pin. You drive the pin out, you punch it out, it's a plastic pin, you break it when you put a new one in. And then this head will turn and come off of here. Because on all meters, they're, because of groundwater contamination, there is, there's no mechanical connection between the meter head and the meter itself, the magnet.
Right.
It's sealed.
It's sealed, yeah. So if this was, I mean, this is a small meter in a meter pit, you don't want groundwater getting any drinking water. So, you know, this head, this head here that actually does the reading is quite simple, I mean, to take off.
Yeah, figuring out what they would have to do inside that to make that happen.
Yeah, my thing, we could roll the dials back.
Oh, are there fingerprints, could there be fingerprints on it?
It could be inside, yeah.
That's why I asked you, you know, you...
Protect the integrity of those fingerprints possibly.
And it's, uh, you know...
Just saying.
That's why I think, you know, it's either had adapters put on it to run the meter backwards or something has taken place with the actual register head. That's why I wanted, you know...
Now, from our phone conversation today, if I understand you correctly, you told them no more water?
Yep.
Until this was resolved?
Yes. I said, we're done. I said, I thought, for me, I said, they're like, well, we need to get water. I said, you're not getting it from us. I said, like, until this is resolved and I figure out what's going on when I talk with the council. I said...
I agree, no more water.
And that's, I wanna, you know, make sure we're all agreeing to that this evening.
You know, here's my thing, if this thing had only registered ten gallons of water, I would say the meter died. But the fact that it's twenty-six thousand in the other direction, it's not, it's not a dead meter. I mean, I've, I've changed plenty of dead meters. When a meter dies, the water keeps flowing and it, it will not read. They don't go backwards, they just stop where they're, you know, where they're at when they die.
Well, if Ben tampered with it, he wasn't very smart, cause he went, you know, he went back farther than he's supposed to go. If in fact that's what he did. And I'm agreeing with you, I don't see how it could go backwards unless it was mainly turned.
If Andy hadn't read it for another couple of weeks, I mean, he'd have been caught back up and...
It might've been.
And gone on. It was to say.
And everyone would just have said, well, they're not getting as much water as they thought.
I just happened to, like I said, I was, I was running to go get my stuff for the labs and...
Happened to read it.
I was like, hey, there's that meter, I'm gonna, cause I knew it had been, you know, it had been three months, well, here in a couple of days.
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't take long to...
These meters have a serial number?
Yep, they're on here, so does the head.
Can you see it on the picture?
Yeah, you can see part of it, but the serial number's right here. And this is the, this is the other thing too, to be, a lot, I mean, a lot of people don't know this, but your original register head has a serial number on it too. And this is the original register head because the serial number matches the body serial number. So, it's not like this is a different register head. It's, it's the one that came with from the factory.
Yeah, I can see...
And that's like our new, our new meters, there's an engraved serial number on the meter base. Unless we changed it, it matches the number on the face of the dial. I mean, even their little meters are, are done this way.
For that very reason, I'm sure. Well, you can tell it's the same, both, both pictures are the same meter, that's why I did it.
Yeah, oh yeah, you can.
So you can't, you can't say, well, they switched meters on or...
No, that's, no, I, I thought about that.
You did a good job.
I thought about that too and that's why I said, just, just for the sake of argument, every time I read this thing, you know, I take a picture of it. And this is what I do, when we have to do a water shut off, I take a picture of it. I'm gonna shut it off to show the read when we turn the water off. So, um, I just did this just for the sake of argument and here's, Rob told me I read it wrong, I said, I couldn't, I took a picture of it. So hopefully they'll have some more information tomorrow and I can let all of you know what they're saying or what we need to do.
Until further notice then, they can get their water elsewhere until this is resolved. And then if we find out that this meter's been tampered with, we'll go to the next step. That's...
Do I want to make a motion on that?
Okay, do I hear a motion?
I motion we do that.
Suspend...
Suspend the water and wait till we find out what's happening with the meter.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
Roll favor, uh...
Aye.
Thank you.
Then the last thing, um, shelter house flooded during the rain, rain we had and we cleaned it, dried it out. And I've also got a bid on that, uh, for you guys to review for doing some storm work over there and replacing a manhole. And I've got fluid waste coming out Thursday, uh, during the last big rain, that manhole that goes from the corner of Walton in the alley by Mike Flew. There's an issue with it between there and your house, Fred. And there's a, there's a little indention out there in the pavement and it's, that's broken down before, that I'm gonna have fluid waste run that line, they're gonna be here anyways, we've gotta pay them a million truck charge. I've got a turtle in the equalization tube at the sewer plant, I gotta get it gen it out of there. Unless, Fred, you wanna come out and poke a stick in it?
Did that once before and you're like, I'll do it again.
But, no, so while they're here, we're gonna pay a two hour maintenance and I mean, this, this deal with sewer plant's probably gonna take them like ten minutes, it's always real easy to do, so while I've got them here, I'm gonna have them run that line and see what comes out or what they get. And then if I need to, I'll go borrow Arcadia's camera and camera.
Is that county drain?
Yeah.
It is, isn't it?
Yep, it is county drain. It's county drain all the way up through there. It sure is. So...
So they're responsible for it doing that?
Well, you know what they're saying now, and I'll tell you what, we have a county drain over on John Street and there's an issue with St. Colton over there and it's at Chad Pfeifer's house and he contacted them and they told him it's his responsibility to fix. So him and Johnny are gonna fix it. He just called, located tickets in and I, I called him and asked him what was going on. But he contacted the county and the county said it's your responsibility to fix, even though we pay...
I know, it's so frustrating.
We pay, we pay maintenance fees.
Why not? We all do. All of a sudden it's...
It's frustrating because here they took some of our grant money for the rainwater system to do their stuff too, so...
Yes, one of the...
But...
Can we, can we contact the commissioner?
That's already been done multiple times.
Oh.
Yeah. That's, that's going nowhere. Arcadia's in a big battle with them right now over, I mean, they had thirty feet of street collapsed and the county wouldn't fix it. It's during the Cape Town. So, whatever gets fixed over there, I mean, we're gonna have to pay for it.
But like you said, you've got to be on minimum two hours, we'd be finished, not to.
Yeah, that's why I'm gonna at least do a little investigative.
Yeah.
Cleaning work, 'cause I cleaned all those drains over there before. And I ran that line from there to down by U. So, and that was like, uh, three years ago. So something, something's happened, and I think it's broke down, or there was a collapse in it, because there's really no trees along there.
I know there was a repair made there back in oh-six, when I was working for the town.
Go look where that repair was made. There is now the, you know, in the asphalt. Where they patched the asphalt, so I'm thinking maybe it's broke again, or.
Or it's broke next to it, you know.
Should a tile issue fix this section, and then it breaks next to it? So it may not be the repair they made, but, you know, real close to it or next to it, so I'm hoping to be able to figure something out. Building report, it's pretty short. Um, had one inspection, three zoning inquiries, four building permit inquiries, and then the genetic census report's complete, it's been sent in. Have any questions about other stuff that I don't have right now?
Thank you for all your, well, that's it. Said, you've got a hundred other things to do besides this.
And I am, one thing I did put in my report, uh, you read about last night, Tom, Tom's been out of the office. He's back now, and I am working with him to get this document together for, uh, the phone company.
Okay, okay.
And we did just get the bond insurance today. So. I think that last piece. You should be, you should be okay.
Alright, we'll move on to old business. Some old business this evening. Okay, we'll move ahead to new business. Chris Thompson from the Times. Hi, Chris, welcome.
Hello, Chris, I don't know how this looks, I love it, it's my first time being here.
It's alright.
My name is Chris Thompson, and co-owner of the Rose Hotel down here. And actually, recently, I just got promoted as the director of marketing and circulation for the Times in Hamilton County. So I am actually here because one of the things that I was asked to do was to create a new program for, it's called Newspapers in Education. And basically, what that allows us to do is to give newspapers to different schools, it helps in the educational environment. And actually, research shows that kids are testing ten percent higher in academic testing when they have newspapers in their classroom. So in order to fund this, we have to do, use sponsors, and we host events. That's why I'm here today, and I just wanted to know, I would like to plan what would be a five K run. And I would like to actually utilize and do that here in Atlanta, Indiana, if you guys are okay with that. So I just wanted to get permission from you guys. I planned a route out that would actually start at the hotel, and go all the way around the exterior, and actually, they would do that twice and come back, it's two and a half miles. So it would be, I'm thinking dates, probably August twenty-ninth, it's a Saturday morning, doing it about, starting about nine AM and ending before noon. So, that's my idea.
Would they run on the county line?
No, they would not run on the county line. They'd actually go down, and they'd stay in town, staying off of six hundred, off of nineteen, and they'd just hit the exterior of town, and actually run up of, um, sorry, railroad street here. And then come back up again, going down Meridian Street, and then ending at the hotel, so. It's real quick and easy, and what the town plan gets out of it is that we will have a lot of newspaper coverage here, as well as commercial advertisement. And being that it's the end of August, it's right before the festival, which would be a good thing to kind of boost, boost some promotion.
Absolutely. Yeah, I'm not opposed to that at all. I, I think, currently, I don't know if you're aware, you know, the kind of sheriff's department handles all of our law enforcement.
Okay.
We definitely wanna touch base with them.
Absolutely.
Get some direction, as far as traffic control. Kevin, do you have a question?
Yeah, how can you call it a five K or something like that?
Actually, the.
Three-point one.
I can actually keep the route going, but what we're gonna call it is a fun run. I'm referencing the five K because it's the closest thing that I can come to describing it, but if we're calling it a fun run, it could be two and a half miles.
I got you. I was just curious, I don't know why you didn't come down to rest it down.
I did that because I didn't want them crossing the railroad tracks.
Oh, so that.
Yeah, and I could think of trip hazards, things like that. I tried to route it for safety reasons.
Anyone have any questions or concerns, or they've already asked?
It's like the microphone.
Yeah, kind of like the microphone.
Yeah, exactly, it's like a microphone.
Sounds good to me, yeah. It'd be fun.
Is this, is this something, you're gonna have like vendors here too as well?
No, no, there won't be vendors there. We will probably have a booth set up along the way in case people need water or something like that.
Water setup.
But yeah, I know I'm gonna have, I'm gonna let them utilize the hotel for bathrooms and all that, so you're not gonna have to worry about that.
Sounds positive to me. Do I hear a motion that we give approval for this?
I motion we approve for it. Sounds like a good idea.
Your second?
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, is, on the twenty-ninth, maybe street bonus?
Yes.
In the morning. Oh, in the, in the evening.
In the evening.
Cool.
Well, that'll be.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll be doing mine in the morning, so we'll be, I'll be waiting, well.
Well, see, they can just stay, and they're on.
Exactly.
You're on one side of the tracks, they're on the other.
Yeah, I would say, uh, we will be in contact with Hamilton County Sheriff's Department. Dennis Quackenbush is our, is our contact person. And, uh, uh, if you'll leave your contact information with us tonight, with Robin.
Absolutely.
And that way, if there's any questions.
Sounds great.
We can coordinate that, communicate with us, and hopefully pull this off, and maybe the start of something that we do every year.
That's kind of what I'm hoping.
Exactly, that would be, that would be nice. Any other questions or concerns this evening? Kevin?
Hey, um, if you guys don't know me, I'm Kevin Soderbeck, I live at two-three-five East Meridian Street. Just making it official. I, I, I. I heard there was a, an issue up here, this was after the fact, I started cutting my trees, that I was part of a conversation as far as my trees go. And it was kind of disappointing, anytime I, I'm brought up in a negative thing up here. I, I was a little late on getting my trees trimmed, and, uh, I just wanted to let you know that I did get them trimmed. And that I was, I was kind of baffled as to why, uh, someone didn't just say something, if there was a concern. Uh, because I'm pretty close to most of the people up here, and why they could, it just came and said something to me. Especially when I got neighbors that come to me and start telling me that the town's making me do it, and that's when I got pretty fired up about the situation. Nobody made me do anything, and it kind of got blown out of proportion. And, uh, it, it just makes all of us look bad, really.
Well, if I can, if you allow me to, Kevin, I'll, uh, if the trees were brought to our attention as a concern, and, uh.
As they should have, they were out in the road.
They were out in the road, and, uh, there was some conversation here at the table about what steps, you know, would need to be taken. Murray Dixon, actually, our code enforcement officer. Murray, speak with you.
Yes.
Okay.
It was right after the fact, he was cutting his, and I just, I started cutting mine, he goes, yeah, I gotta complain on you. I'm like.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
And that's the truth, and, and that's how it went down, and, I mean, as far as a big, long discussion and, uh, swinging them out of you, no, that was never.
No, I just, the neighbor, I don't even know how the neighbors got the fact that, that, this idea that someone.
Now, Kevin, I told you how that happened. You and I have already talked about this.
Yes.
So don't come up here and say, you know, you understand why that happened, you're making a mountain of moe on that issue.
No, no, no. What I wanna know is, why didn't someone just?
Murray did.
And I'm not gonna sit here and mention names.
I went to Murray.
Well.
I went to Murray.
Murray was gonna handle it, and he is our code enforcement officer, so allowing him to do that.
I just didn't.
And we are grateful you, you did.
Yeah, it looked great, by the way.
Well, thanks, and I just, I didn't sit and know why, I didn't know if I did something, why people were not wanting to approach me, or what the deal was. I've always had an open porch, if you will, coming up.
Really, Kevin, we were, we were at conference, me and Jennifer were, so I had to listen to the tape to do the, make the minutes, and all, it was just a little bit. Someone will give, um, the resident at two-three-five East Meridian courtesy contact regarding the trees.
Right.
That's all, it wasn't like.
Well, and I apologize for stirring that up in any way, I was behind.
And I thought Murray had said something, 'cause I saw you out there trimming them, so I was like.
And so did you. And Murray and I talked about it, as far as the issues at hand, and it's been on my mind ever since, and I know that, uh, Angie's got better things to do than the police people on their trees. I mean, we've talked about several things, like the trash guy, going zipping through Indiana Street, he does this to miss trees, you know, zigzagging, and, I mean, it's a joke, if you watch him, it's kind of funny. But, uh, and, and, and this is, not trying to tell you to do your job, I just was thinking ser- uh, like, different solutions, you know? Uh, as far as, I know I got trees out there, and those are my responsibility. I didn't plant them there, well, three of them, I didn't plant there, but, uh, I try to keep up on them.